Alright, so uh, so tonight, um, we'll go into um, we'll go into the uh, Book of Revelations, okay? We go into the Book of Revelations, I see Jamero coming in. Alright. Alright, hey, hey brother man. Alright, so, tonight we go into the Book of Revelations and um, I, I think there's um, uh, there's information written for us, um, in the Book of Revelations so that um, we don't be so, um, easily, um, swayed by every wind of doctrine and all the doctrines that came through so far with hurricanes and so forth, okay? I think the, the Lord has done a um, outstanding job in assuring that the church has credible life-saving directional with assurance information so that we don't have to go to the left or to the right to uh, somehow get answers. We're gonna see that, that answers was already provided before the questions. And it's very, very simple, okay? Very, very simple, okay? So we're gonna go into the Book of Revelation. Okay, at um, I'm gonna start it right here from um, we're gonna start right here as Jason come in, we're gonna start right here from Revelation chapter one. Okay, Revelation chapter one. Now I did say, I think um, it was on Sunday, Sunday passed on a on a study uh, session, I don't know if anybody had a chance to read Revelations chapter two, three, and four. Anybody had a chance to, was able to? Anybody?
No, I didn't get an opportunity.
Alright. What you said Jamero?
I said I once left my mind actually, and I made a note of it, you know.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, no problem, no problem, no problem. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go, go into the Book of Revelation by the way, okay? And um, we're actually gonna see exactly, um, what is there, okay? We're not gonna be nitpicking, okay? We're not gonna be nitpicking and we're not gonna be looking for our favorite scriptures uh, in, once we, once we get going. Uh, but we're gonna see, um, what was left for us, um, to gain, um, uh, sure. Okay, so, here we go. Revelation chapter one, from verse one, it says, "The revelation of Jesus Christ which God gave unto him." So this is a revelation, not something that in the position of Christ that Christ developed, but this is something that God gave to him to show unto his servants things which must shortly come to pass. Now, so what is written in the Book of Revelations are things that have to come to pass, right? But in a short notice, okay? And it says here, "And he sent and signified it by his angel unto his servant John." It says, "Who bear record of the record, who bear record of the word of God and of the testimony of Jesus Christ and of all things that he saw. Blessed is he that read it and they that hear the words of this prophecy." Now, I'm sure we've read this uh, before and it seems like it is nothing new, right? But once you take into account what is being said, you're gonna see something. Verse three again, "Blessed is he that read it and they that hear the words of this prophecy." So, there are some who's actually gonna read it and then there's some who's actually gonna actually hear the words of this prophecy. Now, we know we grow up, um, with a spooky side when it came down to the Book of Revelations. Everybody was uh, afraid or had this fearfulness about the Book of Revelations. Now let me ask a question, let me make sure everybody, everybody can hear me good, right? I'm not cracking, right?
We can hear you.
We can hear you but you like, like, cutting in and out like little, a little.
Oh, okay, okay, I, I don't wanna be cutting up. Uh, how am I now?
It sounds clear to me.
Okay. Okay, so let's keep going. So, so blessed is he that read it and they that hear the words of this prophecy, right? Now, when you read in the Book of Revelation, it is prophecy. Prophecy, in other words, it's already prophesied. It's already prophesied. One thing with prophecy, we don't, we don't have to try to figure out what prophecy means. Uh, come on Spike, uh, let me mute that, okay? We don't have to figure out what prophecy means. All you have to do
Just tell him we cut him out.
We try to explain the words of the prophecy or try to interpret the words of the prophecy. But a prophecy is direct, it doesn't need interpretation, like in, like an example. If a prophecy comes and the word of the Lord say, "That said the word of the Lord, I will destroy the heathen." We, we, we don't need to interpret that. We don't need to look into the Greek, we no need to go into the Hebrew for that.
All you gotta do is make sure I don't be a heathen. Right, that's all you gotta do, make sure I don't be a heathen.
You, you, you understand, that you know, he say he can destroy the heathen though. That, that's a, that's prophecy, so you don't have to figure, you know, things and as it relates to that, okay? We go with what he say. Now, verse, uh, same uh, verse, it says, "And and keep those things which are written therein." So you hear it, you read it, and keep it. Keep what you've read and what you've heard, you'll keep. That's, that, this is very important. In other words, when someone gives you something to keep, they didn't ask you to change it. They didn't ask you to adjust it, they didn't ask you to increase it or diminish from it. They said, "Keep this." Notice what he said. "Blessed are they that read it and they that hear words of this prophecy and keep those things which are written therein, for the time is at hand." Remember when Jesus came on the saying, when he was preaching the gospel, he said to repent, "For the kingdom of heaven is at hand." So now he's saying, "The time is at hand." Verse four, it says, "Join to the seven churches which are in Asia." Now watch this, watch how quickly, watch how quickly it's now directional. This prophecy, the words of this prophecy has to get out to the churches. "Join to the seven churches which are in Asia," because that's where the seven churches were. So, it started with those seven churches and it was, it was like wildfire after that. It was supposed to keep spreading with the same words of the prophecy, but keep it as the sayings were. You know, we get a little excited about it and then, you know, we start to add our own little twists and so forth, so, you know, so we get little sugar-coated information and so forth. "So join to the seven churches which are in Asia, grace be unto you and peace from him who, which is, which was, and which is to come and from the seven spirits which are before his throne and from Jesus Christ who is the faithful witness and the first begotten of the dead and the prince of the kings of the earth unto him that loved us and washed us from our sins in his own blood and had made us kings and priests unto God and his father, to him be glory and dominion forever and ever, amen." Verse seven, "Behold, he cometh with clouds." Okay? "Behold, he cometh with clouds," right? "And every eye shall see him." Right? So he's not gonna, he's not starting from one particular point where every eye is not gonna see him. How he is coming? It says, "And every eye shall see him and they also which pierced him and all kindreds of the earth shall wail because of him, even so." Amen. Come on, let's say amen to that. Uh, that's the place to say amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen, because he says, he says here, watch this, I'm not making this up, right? It says here, "And they also which pierced him and all the kindreds of the earth shall wail because of him." Amen! How about that? Now every eye can see him, but watch this now. Those who pierced him and all the kindreds of the earth is gonna start wailing. So watch this. I can show you something there, cause he's showing you, cause people make it seem like they can't wait until he come. They can't wait, "Oh, what a day that would be." You know, "What a day that's in that would be when we all see Jesus, we'll sing, I shout victory." Wrong.
Wrong.
That ain't what it say. The song sound good. Don't remember that song, don't remember them songs.
Yeah, mine say no other than that.
Uh?
Growing up, I was in there.
Don't remember them songs, that's one of them songs. Uh, "When we all see him, we'll shout victory," right? But watch this, watch this, let me read it again. Cause it says, "He cometh with clouds and every eye shall see him and they also which pierced him." Watch this, "And all kindreds of the earth shall wail because of him." Ain't no singing and shouting, no victory up and down. So, ain't gotta get all, uh, sucked in uh, to what uh, our forefathers have already get, uh, gotten sucked into, right? It is time for us to realign, recalibrate our focus and tweak our ears so we can hear and keep these words of the prophecy as he gave them to us. So watch this now. Watch this. And it says here, verse eight, "I am Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the ending," saying, "the Lord which is, which was, which is to come, the Almighty." So we know that the I Am, who is Alpha and Omega, talking about Christ himself, is the Almighty. It says here in verse nine, "I, John, who also am your brother and companion in tribulation." Now I want us to pay close attention, okay? So John was already a part of something that was going on, and it's called tribulation. Okay? Now, we gonna see, we gonna see that this information that he's giving to the church is because they are in tribulation. Tribulation, not because you could have a glass of Kool-Aid, doesn't mean such you're not in tribulation. We drank it up. You're in tribulation. Watch this. "I, John, who also am your brother and companion in tribulation and in the kingdom and patience of Jesus Christ." It says here, "Was in the aisles that is called batmos for the word of God and for the testimony of Jesus Christ." I was in the spirit on the Lord's day, right? I was in the spirit on the Lord's day and heard behind me a great voice as of a trumpet, right? Now watch this. "And Omega, first and the last, and what thou seest and what thou seest, right in a book, and send it unto the seven churches which are in Asia." So he's helping us understand. What I'm telling you right now is written for it to be sent to the churches which are in Asia. In other words, this is not, this is not the street meeting information. That's what the gospel is. The gospel is what you go out in the highways and the byways with. This year specifically is sent to the church, total different story. What the church been hearing? Prosperity and all kind of irrity. It's been irritating. So watch this. It says, "And what thou seest, right in a book, and send it unto the seven churches which are in Asia, unto Ephesus and unto Smyrna and unto Pergamos, unto Tharathara, unto Sardis and unto Philadelphia and unto Leo DC." "And I turned to see the voice that spoke with me and being turned, I saw seven golden candlesticks and in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks, one light unto the son of God, son of Man, clothed with a raiment down to the foot and gird about the pops with a golden girdle." So John say, when I turn, I, I, I turn, he says, "Turn to see the voice that spoke to me" cause you know, you have someone talking, but you, you just, you know, you won't connect what you hearing to a visual. So he says, "So I turned, to see the voice that spoke with me and being turned, I saw seven golden candlesticks," semicolon. So what he is explaining next is what he is describing, this, the golden candlesticks. Watch this, "And in the midst of the seven golden, uh, sorry, in the midst of the seven candlesticks, one like the sun of Man, clothed with a garment down to the foot and gird about the pops with a golden girdle. His hair and his hairs were white like wool as white as snow and his eyes were as a flame of fire and his feet like unto fine brass as if they burned in a furnace and his voice as the sound of many waters." So, he saw, in the midst of the seven candlesticks, he saw one, right? One light unto the sun of Man, right? Clothed with a garment down to the foot, right? Gird about the pops with a golden girdle. So he's clothed with a garment down to the foot. Remember, the Lord told us already that we must put on the whole armor. Verse fourteen, it says, "And his head and his hairs were white like wool as white as snow." As, watch this, semicolon. "And his eyes were as a flame of fire." Watch again, semicolon. "On his feet like unto fine brass as if they burned in a furnace." Now we know, he was in being burnt, but they were, this is how he was seeing what he was seeing. Or what he was allowed to see, cause remember now, remember, he turned to see the voice that spoke with him. Remember Moses was in a similar position, when Moses want to, he wanted to have the opportunity to see. But, the Lord at that time allowed him to see is in the part, because he say, at that time, he say, if he's him, he'll, he'll die. So he allow him to see what he wanted him to see. Now watch this now. Same rule applies. Now this is not, this is not the point that John was making. John was making the point as it is written, based upon what he saw, right? Now remember, Paul already told us, we see through what? What he said, anyone remember what he see, what, what he say we see through? Let me give a couple of seconds, anyone remember? My wife say, my wife say, "We see through a glass, how?" Uh? Darkly, right? We see through a glass, but we see it how? We see through a glass, um, darkly, right? Now, is a reason for that, right? This is here, this here is uh, uh, First Corinthians chapter thirteen and verse uh, verse twelve, let me see, let me see if I may have to read that. It says, uh, watch this, verse eleven, it says, "When I was a child, I speak as a child, I understood as a child." Right? It says, "I thought as a child, but when I became a man, I put away childish things." For now, we see through a glass darkly. Remember now, everything that has been said, we have to take into account to everything that we have been privy to. We can't push everything aside. So it says, "For now, now," it say sometimes, it say, "For now, we see through a glass darkly, but then face to face." Now, "I know in part," it say, "I know in part, but then shall I know even as also I am known." And now, abide in faith, hope charity these three, but the greatest of these is charity. So, Paul made it clear that when we see, we see through a glass darkly, right? But then, face to face, so this is what John was seeing. He came face to face with what he is actually seeing. But remember, he's seeing it darkly. So, watch this, so, he can only, he can only tell you, he can only describe what he see. He cannot tell you what it is. Remember that. Okay, so we ain't gotta make a big, nothing notable about anything because remember now, information now has been given to the church. So it says here, right? Verse sixteen, it says, "And he had in his right hand seven stars," right? Now remember, we did a session, it was a couple, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, right? Couple of weeks ago, and remember, we end up going into the stars, right? So, he had in his right hand seven stars and out of his mouth went a sharp, two-edged sword. Now you know, he had in his hand seven stars, right? And out of his mouth, a two-edged sword. Now, we can become very, um, descriptive with that. I mean, to me, you know, Mr. James like, a sword coming out of his mouth, right? With two edges. Yeah, so, so, when you go descriptive, you, you gotta keep going descriptive because the na, the, the narrative doesn't change. So, you know, it's dangerous when you, when you, when you go into something whereas you are only seeing darkly, but then after that, then you stop. But then, you know, this two-edged sword coming out of his mouth and seven stars in his hand, what does that mean? Does it means that there were seven stones of Orion in his hand? So we gotta pay attention, right? And then it says here, verse seventeen, it says, "And when I saw him, I fell at his feet as dead and he laid his right hand upon me." So I guess those seven stars was in his lap on there. He laid his right hand on it, right?
Yeah.
Saying, "On to me, fear not, I am the first and the last. I am he that liveth and must die, and behold, I am alive forevermore, amen." Amen? Amen?
Amen.
Amen, right? And then it says here, "And have the keys of hell and of death." So, Jesus is the one who has the keys of hell and death. And it says, verse nineteen, "Write the things which thou hast seen." He said, "What you saw, write." And he says, "And the things which are and the things which shall be hereafter." Right? Remember on Sunday, Sunday, this word came up, I mean, he's talking in that session about the, the word hereafter, cause a lot of people, um, stumbled at that same particular word, not knowing what he was talking about. But he was talking about hereafter, just like he is talking to John. But this information have to get to the church. After, hereafter, the church. Once the church itself, right, is given, uh, this information. Now remember now, the church is not in a timeframe in terms of, you know, like they use the word dispensation. I don't know where they, you ain't gotta get all technical, um, uh, using a word like dispensation. Cause it's only gonna, uh, confuse people when you start talking about dispensation. The church doesn't operate in dispensation. The church is the church, the church is just the body, right? The body, the body of Christ, right? The body of Christ has to be complete, just like until the times of the Gentiles are fulfilled. The times of the Gentiles, it's, it's just the same thing. The times of the Gentiles are when he's talking about the church, okay? Everything has to come to a complete. Everything has to come to a complete, that's what he's talking, so when he's saying hereafter. When the church is fully complete, okay, hereafter. And we keep going now, voice twenty, he says, the mystery of the seven stars which thou sawest. In my right hand and the seven golden candlesticks. Cause remember, he saw in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks, one like the seven man, but he is explaining something then. He's gonna explain to him, right? What he saw, although he saw something, he have to explain to him what he saw. Now, why I didn't know that before? That one, that one slipped me, I, I, I mean, I, I read that numerous times, but I mean that. You know, I, 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 I thought, I thought what John saw, John's explanation of what he saw was enough. But it wasn't so, because now here is Alpha and Omega explaining him the mystery. Cause remember what is a mystery, a mystery is a parable, it is a dark saying. Dark saying, in this case, he wanted to connect the voice with the words. Well, he wanted to connect what he was hearing to visuals. He wanted to see where the words was coming from. So this is a mystery, but he said, the mystery of the seven stars. Which thou sawest in my right hand and the seven golden candlesticks. So the seven golden candlesticks is a mystery. He can neglect that the seven golden candlesticks, candlesticks is a mystery, that's what he said. And he said, as you, and the seven stars, uh, are the angels of the seven churches. So the seven stars are the angels of the seven churches. So the seven churches has angels. Angels, right? Then it says here, and the seven candlesticks which thou sawest are the seven churches. So that's what the seven candlesticks are, the seven candlesticks, they are the churches. Now, when you look in, um, when you look in, um, so-called Jewish. Uh, Hebrew, um, drawings and stuff like that, you would see they would have something like, uh, what they call. A, the seven candlesticks, they would have this thing drawn, right? Then one stick in the middle and so forth, right? As, as a visual to the seven golden candlesticks. But in this case, we don't need that visual, of course, that visual, but be clear, what he say. It is the seven candlesticks, the seven candlesticks are the seven churches. Okay, someone might go, but. Okay, I guess, uh, Jamero, I meet you, Jamero. All right, uh, Jason fall off it, okay, so, next chapter. Next chapter, now watch this, watch what he says now, unto the angel of the church of Ephesus. So remember now, so now this letter is now been, is for the angel. Of the church of Ephesus. He says, these things say, he that holdeth the seven stars. In his right hand, walking in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks, right? So Messiah walks in the midst of the golden candlesticks. The seven golden candlesticks, these are the churches, he is in the midst, okay? He says, I know thy works and thy labor and thy patience and how thou. Can't, can't not bear them which are evil. And thou hast tried them which say they are apostles and are not, and has found them liars. Now this is a special church, this particular church. Ain't got time to be casting petty stones at people. This particular church, it was going at apostles, trying the apostles. To see whether the apostles are true apostles. They don't do that today, oddly. Every, you know, people just normally find someplace to go and sit down. And hear the word of God, but they don't try these apostles, right? Because these apostles are somewhat, you know, they're like powerful, touching on God's name. Huh, he was not speak against, uh, uh, word of God, speak against, uh, uh, the man of God, this is the man of God. This particular church was in playing that. This particular church, it tried these apostles, okay? Tried them, and there's a reason, is a reason for that. It says here, it tried them, these apostles, and it says. And, and, and found out who are not, and has found them liars. And had borne, mean carried, right, and has borne and has patience. And for my name's sake has labored and has not fainted. This is a special, particular church, the church at Ephesus, right? It says, nevertheless, I have somewhat against thee because thou hast left thy first love. Right, he says, remember therefore from whence thou art fallen. He said, it's simple to them, just remember from your fall. The, where you are falling, and then he say repent. Okay, so what it is that you fell at, he says, that same at. Repent at that same point of fall. He says, and do the first works. Do what you's doing first, do the first works, and it says, or else I will come unto thee quickly. And I will remove thy candlestick out of his place, except thou repent. He say, if you don't, I will remove your candlestick out of its place. Now, that's a whole church, now watch this, I wanna show you something, because sometimes, you know, we think he talking about a geographical location church. The whole body of Christ is summed up into seven churches. Somehow we fit in one of them, you gonna know, you gonna know. You don't gotta worry about it, if you don't try apostles, then you know. You know, you're not, you're not one of them, uh, to try apostles and so forth, or whatever. But I tell you this though, if you know your point of falling, repent. From that particular point, how about that? Then it says here, but this thou hast. That thou hatest the deeds of the Nicolaites, which I also hate. He that had an heir, let him hear what the Spirit say unto the churches. To him that overcome it, will I give to eat of the tree of life. Now, watch this now. So he's saying this to the churches, he say, listen, he that had an heir, let him hear. What the Spirit said unto the churches, to him that overcome it, will I give to eat of the tree of life. Now watch this now, you don't want, you, that's it. You don't want, it's almost like you, you go away, you travel, you go away or whatsoever. But some strange reason, you're not allowed in any restaurant, any fast food chain. You cannot go to the food store to buy food, it's like, it's like, you shouldn't be there. Now, if you are not allowed to eat of the tree of life, that can be a problem. So watch this now, what will determine you eating, us eating of the tree of life, right? Let him hear what the Spirit say to the churches, hear what the Spirit say to the churches. To him that overcome it, will I give to eat of the tree of life, so you must overcome. Overcome what, remember what he say, well, the place that you fell, he say repent, this thing's simple. Right, and then do the first works, huh? Return back to your first love, cause remember, he says in voice four, he, he says. Uh, I have somewhat against thee because thou hast left thy first love. Now, as the Lord talking direct to the church, so the church, ain't gotta play, uh, hocus pocus on nobody. Make it seems like, we ain't gotta play like, y'all need to get it right, you know? God damn and sword, y'all, shut up, you don't need to do none of that stuff. What you need to do as the church is, right? Is, it says in voice five, remember therefore from whence thou art fallen. Don't remember, don't talk about, man, I remember when he is, sure, my, he's a clown, all them deli tree. Yeah, 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 that's good, but I, I need to eat up the tree of life. He said, remember whence thou art fallen and repent. He did not say, wait until you have a crisis to seek repentance. That's the difference, why? Because the church, he ain't giving the church that kinda opportunity. The opportunity that he's giving the church. You remember where you fall and you repent. And do the first works, or else I come quickly, right, come unto thee quickly. Now, that's a different state, now, this is personal, he say, unless I come unto thee quickly. I come unto thee quickly, and I will remove thy candlestick out of his place. Huh, you remove your candlestick from out of his place, except thou repent. Anyhow, so let's keep going, what is it? And unto the angel of the church of Smyrna, right? These things say, the first and the last which was dead and is alive. I know thy works and tribulation and poverty, but thou art rich, and I know the blasphemy of them. That say they are Jews and are not, but are the synagogue of Satan. Right, now remember, remember, uh, we gotta remember. What he is talking about, right? He says, he says here, I know the works, and I know, you know, we, we, you know, we did some. You know, we did some like arrows pointing and so forth as relates to this. But he says, I know thy works, so he's talking to one of the churches. Hmm, remember now, he is addressing the seven churches, how did we miss this? He addressing the seven churches, now, so far, this is the second of the seven churches. This is the second one he's addressing. So in this particular church of Jesus Christ. He say, I know thy works, right? And he says, and tribulation and poverty. But thou art rich, that's the promise. And he says, and I know the blasphemy of them which say they are Jews. And are not but are the synagogue of Satan, now remember. Now, this was, this was a tradition among the people of God. The people of God were always trying to refer to themselves as Abraham's children. We be Abraham seed, man, when he talking to Christ, listen. I am what you say, but that's it, I, I'm a son of Abraham. He say, well, listen, Abraham is your father, you would not try to see, to take my life, this is what Jesus said. So in other words, Jesus is accusing you right there of you being blasphemous. Because you claim to be Abraham seed, but yet you reject the seed. Of Abraham at the same time. So he say, I know thy works and tribulation and poverty, but thou art rich, and I know the blasphemy of them would say they are Jews. And are not but are the synagogue of Satan. He says, fear none of those things which thou shalt suffer. So he says, you must fear nothing that you should suffer. Behold, the devil shall cast some of you into prison that ye might, that you may be tried. And ye shall have tribulation ten days, be thou faithful unto death, and I will give thee a crown of life. Now, this particular church, the rough things is going on, and this one. He say, I know your works and tribulation and poverty, I mean, tribulation is up, but tribulation and poverty. And then he says in voice ten, he say, fear none of those things which thou shalt suffer, not rejoice and glory it. He say, things that thou shalt suffer. The devil shall cast some of you into prison, or just, it doesn't get any better. And it says, and that you may be tried. And ye shall have tribulation ten days, be thou faithful unto death. Look at that, and I will give thee the crown of life, he's like, give you a crown of life. He says, he that have an heir, let him hear what the Spirit say unto the churches. He that overcome it shall not be hurt of the second death. So when we die, the first time, that's not the only death that comes, cause remember now, you live again. But for them that do not, uh, resurrect at their first trump. Right, when they, those who do not get up at the, uh, first trump, they still will get up. But at a different time, and when they get up at a different time, they are the ones that will be faced with this second death. He say, giving you an opportunity not to go to a lot. To be hurt of the second death. Now, you know, we stuck in weeping mood, uh, weeping mood, mood, when our loved one dies. You know, and stuff like that, yeah, cause it hurt, but he give you time for mourning and everything like that, but guess what? That is called the first death. He never tell you, don't worry about the first death. Hmm, he say, remember, he say, I got the keys, remember, we done read that, he say, I got the keys, the hell I'm dead, oh, that one over. But guess what, the second death, ain't, ain't no key for that. Ain't no key for the second death, the second death is eternal death. Jesus died, uh, you know, uh, same death that we all will be privy to, that same death. That he has a key for. Now, you will hope that the person you traveling with to a certain location, when you reach its destination, they have a key. You have a, you have a key for this place, or no, I ain't got no key, bro, we traveled two hundred miles, bro. You ain't got no key, you ain't got no key. Now Jesus got a key, now watch this, so he's saying. He that overcome it shall not be hurt of the second death. Now watch this, voice twelve, he says, unto the angel of the church in Pergamos, right? These things say, he which had the sharp sword with two edges. He says, I know thy works, and where thou dwellest, even where Satan's seat is. And thou holdest fast my name and has not denied my faith, even in those days wherein. Antipas was my faithful martyr, who was. was my faithful martyr who was slain among you. He says, where Satan dwelled. But I have a few things against thee. Because thou hast there them that hold the doctrine of Balam, who taught Balak to cast a stumbling block before the children of Israel. Right? To eat things sacrificed on the idols and to commit fornication. So hast thou also them that hold the doctrine of the Nicolatians? Not only them, it was the, those that were in Ephesus as well. He says, which things I hate. He say, repent, or else I will come unto thee quickly and will fight against them with the sword of my mouth. Now, this is what he's saying. Right? To this particular church. And he says, in verse 70, he that have an air, let him hear, uh, what the Spirit said unto the churches, to him that overcome it, will I give the eat of the hidden manor. And will give him a white stone, and in the stone, a new name written, which no man know it save he that receive it in. Okay, so you will be privy to a new name. This is very important. Okay? Now, 18. And unto the angel of the church in Tyretyra, right? These things say, the son of God, who had his eyes like unto a flame of fire, right? He says, and his feet are like fine brass. He says, I know thy works and charity and service and faith and thy patience and thy works. And at last to be more than the first. Notwithstanding, I have a few things against thee, because thou sufferest that woman Jezebel, which calleth herself a prophetess, to teach and seduce my servants to commit, uh, fornication and to eat things sacrificed unto idols. And I gave her space to repent of her fornication. And she repented not. Says, behold, I will cast her into a bed, and them that commit adultery with her into great tribulation, except they repent of their deeds, of their deeds. Now, watch this now. Remember, the church is already going through tribulation. Not the great tribulation. But you can see, what he trying to prevent the church from going through is great tribulation. Although he gonna have to save them out of great tribulation. But they will not experience the great tribulation. What he's saying to this particular church, he says, I will cast her into a bed, and then that commit adultery with her into great tribulation. You already going through tribulation, but not great tribulation. Cause it's gonna be a time for the great tribulation. And we can see this. And it says, verse 23, and it says, and I will kill her children with death, and all the churches shall know that I am he which searches the reins and hearts. And I will give unto every one of you according to your words. What? Unto you, I say. And unto the rest in Tyretira, as many as have not this doctrine and which have not known the depths of Satan as they speak, I will put upon you none other burden. Okay? So he says, is, is very, very, uh, specific. He says, yeah, right? And he says, yeah, let me read it again. But unto you, I say, unto the rest, uh, unto the rest in Tyretira, and as many as have not this doctrine. So if you don't have the doctrine of the Nicolaia, Nicolatians and the, uh, and the doctrine of Balam, right? He says, yeah, uh, which have not known the depths of Satan. Right? As they speak. He says, I will put upon you none other burden, no other burden. He says, but that which ye have already hold fast till I come. And it says in verse 26, and he that overcome it and keep it my words unto the end to him, will I give power over the nations. Now, this is very important. I'll give pow, I'll give you power over the nations. Verse 27, and he, and he shall rule them with a rod of iron. You like to be among this crew, eh? Rule with a rod of iron as the vessels of a potter. Shall they be broken and shivers even as I received of my Father. And I will give him the morning star. He that had an air, let him hear what the Spirit said unto the churches. So we go into Revelation, chapter three. Cause why? Why are we doing this like this? It's because this here is a draft written only to the churches. But they go and try and explain this to the whole world. Well, they got a time for this. What's the name for them? It's for the churches. And it says in verse one, he says, and unto the angel of the church of Sardis, right? These things say, he that had the seven spirits of God. Now, I remember times past, you know, I, I don't know if some of y'all may, uh, attest to this, um, that sometimes that there were times when people tried to figure out, like what church this particular church is, right? They would start to say, um, this a lukewarm church, or this a this church, and that's a that church, or whatsoever, right? But no, you, 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 you aren't privy to that. Cause remember now, right? The seven churches are viewed as, um, on a, on a lamstand as seven candlesticks. Right? Seven candlesticks. So they, they are together. So you cannot distinguish who is who. But you know one thing? The things what he say, he have a problem in. You, 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 you need to get rid of them things, what he say, he got a problem in. Get rid of them things, what he say, he have a problem in. Let's go from there. Now, watch this now. Read it again, verse one, it says, unto the angel of the church in Sardis, right? These things which say, he that had the seven spirits of God and the seven stars, I know thy works, that thou hast a name, that thou livest and art dead. Be watchful and strengthen the things which remain that are ready to die. So, uh, let me, let me have to understand now. So this, this, this church now is, is, is in a, in an advanced position. This one is saying to be watchful and strengthen the things which remain that are ready to die. Now, uh, people ready to prosper, man. Plenty of people ready for success and stuff like that. Ain't nothing wrong with that. But this one is in this position, right? Where these ones, they are, they ready to die. I ain't talking about the ones who say, man, I ready to go home and, you know, go and take me now. No. Ones who ready die, they loving not their lives. To the death. Uh? To the death. So he says, therefore, I have not found thy words perfect before God. He says, remember therefore how thou hast received and heard and hold fast and repent. If therefore thou shalt not watch, I will come on thee as a thief, and thou shalt not know what hour I will come upon thee. Thou hast a few names, even in Sardis, which have not defiled their garments. And they shall walk with me in white. And they, for they are worthy. He that overcome it the same shall be clothed in white raiment. And I will not blot out his name out of the book of life, but I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels. He that had an air, let him hear what the Spirit said unto the churches. You see this? Now, this, this why I tell you, this particular church, right? Sardis is a very advanced church. Very, very advanced. They, 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 it's like they ahead, it's like they ahead, right? Now, watch this. Verse 7, it says, and to the angel of the church in Philadelphia, right? These things say, he that is holy, he that is true, he that had the key of David, he that open it, and no man shut it, and shut it, and no man open it. I know thy works, behold, I have set before thee an open door, and no man can shut it, for thou hast a little strength and has kept my word and has not denied my name. Behold, I will make them of the synagogue of Satan, right? I will make them of the synagogue of Satan, which say they are Jews and are not, but do lie. Behold, I will make them, I will make them to come and worship before thy feet and to know that I have loved thee. Because thou hast kept the word of my patience. I also will keep thee from the hour of temptation. That's it, man. Now, now, get it, get it now. The same great tribulation is also called the hour of temptation. Now, watch this, yeah? Right? Okay. He says, from the hour of temptation which shall come upon all the world. Now, the hour of temptation, cause remember now, you know, but on Sunday, I think I had mentioned that, uh, the whole world is Babylon. He can deal swiftly with Babylon. Babylon is gonna deal with Babylon in one hour. Uh? In one hour. Okay? That's why we gotta, we gotta pay attention to these scriptures. Uh? Okay? In one hour, right? So watch this now. So matter of fact, just, just so, uh, uh, so you could see, uh, what I'm, what I'm talking about. Uh, I'll read something from, uh, Revelation, chapter 18. Revelation, chapter 18, verse 10, it says, standing afar off for the fear of her torment, saying, alas, alas! The great city Babylon, the mighty city, for in one hour is thy judgment come. Babylon. Babylon's judgment is in one hour, right? One hour. So watch this. Once again, verse 10, Revelation, uh, chapter three, verse 10, he says, because thou has kept, uh, the, the word of my patience, I will also, he said, I also will keep thee from the hour of temptation. The same hour of temptation, right? Which is the great tribulation. He says, which shall come upon all the world. So this is not a city. That's why it's important. You know, like, okay, watch this. I can show you something. You see this here? What he's talking about to the churches? He already know, this right here is helping the church to get rid of all of the errors what, what they got. When you understand what he's talking about, he's helping the church. So watch this. A lot of things we the church have said ain't what he said. And again, people, uh, in a days, but then what he say? So what he saying is, okay, okay. Repent from that. Uh? That's all he say, repent from that. You know, it, don't worry about, uh, don't worry about this, uh, you know, don't worry about your feelings getting hurt. People, you know, look at you like, oh, you, you know, you said something wrong. Well, who didn't say something wrong? Uh? So he staying here, fix it. Cause he say, I will keep thee from the hour of temptation which shall come upon all the world. And when you speed fast forward, you will see that this one hour is coming on Babylon. But here, he gives the church the mystery explained, he explaining to this particular church, that this one hour judgment is coming upon the whole world. The whole world is Babylon. The whole world is Babylon. Come on, man. Babylon all over the planet. The only one, no one fool you. Too many talking, uh, about certain things and so forth. So, watch this, right? So it says, yeah. Uh, uh, let me finish reading again. He says, because thou hast kept the word of my patience, I also will keep thee from the hour of temptation which shall come upon all the world to try them that dwell upon the earth. Right? Now, watch this. This is the second death. This is, this is towards going at the second death. Because guess what? At this particular time, you don't wanna be, you don't wanna be, that's why he say, I, remember the, uh, two churches before, he say, well, listen, um, you know, I'll do you a favor and, and keep you from the second death. I'll keep you from the hurt of the second death. Because you, you don't wanna be a part of the second death. This, this, that's the wrong time to be tried. That, you, this the try, this the trial now, this the trial would be wrong. This, this the best time to be tried to this tribulation that be going through now. Remember, he say, I've not put on you more than you could bear. That's why some people have faced more drastic things than some of us. Cause we gotta believe what he say. We gotta believe what he say. Some people think that everybody will experience the same thing. No, everybody is not. That's why when you read these letters to the seven churches, they are all not facing the same things. But the things that he put before them, he expect them to bear them. Bear them. Now, you know, that is one of them in particular. Boy, listen, one of that is one way is tribulation, prison, uh, uh, trying and, 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 and getting put to death. Anyhow. Let's keep going. 11. Ye all, I come quickly, hold fast which thou hast, that no man take thy crown. That no man take thy crown. He say, hold, hold fast now. You know, so don't, don't, uh? Ain't nobody gotta be asking no question. So I come not brother get six crown, I get one. Well, ain't like the brother breaking nobody hooves and teeth, the teeth, nobody ground. Do it's them, do it's them is just gashing in. Do it's them is, uh, they throwing in the towel, left, right, and center. They didn't wanna repent. They know where they fall, but they haven't repent from it. They won't continue. So what happened? You, you, you willingly give up your crown. You're groundless. When you don't be walking around with no crown. Hey! Look at him, no crown. Boy, you should be ashamed of yourself. What kind of king, he ain't got no crown. He make his kings and priests with you. You, you ain't got no crown. Uh? See brothers come walking, uh? They got a donkey of crowns, man, uh? That same church really, that same Sardis church. Them who up in Sardis, them who up in Sardis, they, they probably got plenty of grounds. Cause they ain't got no time to play. They ain't got no time to play. Let me keep going. There's more. Now, watch this. 14, it says, unto the angel of the church of the Lysodins, right? Now, this, this is, this particular church is the one particular church that many churches hinged on. You know, because it, he say something, then, yeah, yeah, this particular one, they use this one to start pointing fingers. But the same for the finger pointing. The Lysodians, he says, these things said, the amen, the faithful and true witness the beginning of creation of God. I know thy works, that thou art neither cold nor hot, I would thou were cold or hot. So then, because thou art lukewarm and neither cold nor hot, I will spew thee out of my mouth. Because thou says, I am rich. And increase with goods and of need of nothing. And know it's not that thou art wretched, and miserable, and poor, and blind, and naked, this is, this is a sad state to be in. This is a sad, sad state to be in, like I tell you truth. This particular church reminds me of ghetto fabulous. Ghetto fabulous, ghetto fabulous would be the ones who say, I rich. I'm increasing with goods and I've needed nothing. But you don't know that you are wretched, and miserable, and poor, and blind, and naked. That's him ghetto fabulous. Now watch this, he say, I counsel thee to buy of me gold tried in the fire, that thou mayest be rich. And right, and white reinement, that thou mayest be clothed, and that the shame of thy nakedness do not appear. And anoint thine eyes with eye-sounds, so thou mayest see. As many as I love, I rebuke and chasten it, be zealous therefore, and re. And he said, to this particular church, so watch this, so, so this, this particular church. Ain't going through some of the things that some of the other churches going through, that's why I tell you. All the churches, everybody in the church ain't gonna be faced with the same things. Watch this. Voice twenty, behold, I stand at the door knock, if any man hear my voice, I'll open the door. I will come into him and will stop with him and he with me. To him that overcome it, I will grant to sit with me in my throne, even as I also overcome. And I'm sat down with my father in his throne. And he that had an ear, let him hear what the spirit say unto the churches. Very interesting, right? Very, very interesting, now watch this now. Now that that gets set up, I want us to now zoom in even a little bit more now. Right, so after, see now, after we done get what he saying, because he, you know, he done, he done, he talking out of the church. The church busy, the church is busy talking to people who they think need to hear from God. And forget that he already addressed them. So the church can, don't, 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 don't play crazy on these letters, don't play crazy on these letters, but guess what? You don't even know which one you fit in. You don't know which one you fit in, just make sure you ain't fit in nothing what he say, I got a problem with. And everything what he say, repent from, they use sport it, repent from it. Don't play crazy, yeah, I think, I think I from the church is smart, you ain't from nothing, just repent. Uh, repent, the church is a body, so watch this. Voice one, now watch how this gets set up. Voice one, it says, after this, very, very important, so after he done dressed the church, he say, after this. I looked and behold, a door was open in heaven, I can show you something now. So just now, this, so after this, so remember when they was saying hereafter? When he was talking about hereafter, he was talking about after the church. After this, so it says, after this, I looked and behold, a door was open in heaven. And the first voice which I heard was as it were a trumpet talking with me. It said, come up heaven, come up higher. And I will show thee things which must be here after. So this is what, this was, Jesus was setting this up from, from long time, what he's talking about. So the hereafter he was talking about was after the church. So I can show you what comes after this. He says, voice two, and immediately I was in the spirit, and behold, a throne was set in heaven. And one sat on the throne, and he that sat was to look upon like a jasper. And a sa- sardine stone, and there was a rainbow round about the throne. In sightlike unto an emerald. And round about the throne were four and twenty seats, so there was, uh, there was four hundred. And twenty seats around the throne, right? Around the throne, four and twenty seats, and upon the seats I saw. Of four and twenty elders sitting, nobody on bathroom break, ain't nobody missing, nobody calling sick. There were four and twenty elders sitting, four hundred and twenty elders. Sitting down around the throne, clothed in white reinement, and it says, and they had on their heads. Crowns of gold. And out of the throne proceeded lightnings and thunderings and voices, and there were seven lamps of fire. Burning before the throne, which are the seven spirits of God. So the seven spirits of God, they were the lamps, they were lamps of fire. Lamps of fire burning before the throne, the lamps of fire, you don't scratch a match. You don't use gasoline, but these are the seven spirits of God. Burning before the throne, right? On lamps, thought I'd express that, right? Now watch this, and out of the throne proceeded, sorry, I done read it, sorry, and there four voice six, and there. And before the throne, there was a sea of glass like unto crystal. And in the midst of the throne, and round about the throne were four beasts, full of eyes before and behind. So there were four beasts round about the throne, so four beasts round about the throne, but there were four and twenty elders. And around the throne, there were four beasts, full of eyes. Before and behind. That's all like, I mean, that's all like, uh.
You is sneaking about that.
Listen, that's a few surveillance up in there.
You getting by on nothing.
Uh, that's a little violence up in there, uh? So nigga, listen, all kind of eyes.
Yeah.
Right, now watch this.
You wanna eye.
Exactly. And it says, yeah, and the first beast was like a lion, and the second beast like a calf, it didn't say it was, it says like. Like a lion, like a calf, and the third beast had a face as a man, not off a man. As a man, and it says, and the fourth beast was like a flying eagle. And the four beasts had each of them six wings about him, and they were full of eyes within. Right, within, within what, the wings. Full of eyes within, and it says, and they rest not day and night, saying, holy, holy, holy Lord God Almighty. Which was and is and is to come. And it says, and when those beasts give glory and honor and thanks to him that sat on the throne. Who lived forever and ever, the four and twenty elders fall down before him that sat on the throne. So nobody was laying a, let me, so, right, and it says, yeah, and worship him that live it forever and ever. And cast their crowns before the throne, saying thou art worthy. So they took the crowns and they cast it. Right, before the throne. Saying thou art worthy, O Lord, to receive glory and honor and power, for thou hast created all things. And for thy pleasure, they are and were created. So watch it, let me read the last part again. What they said, it says, for thou hast created all things, and for thy pleasure. They are and were created. Now watch this now, now that's, that's, that, that's the time, you know, you feel kind of a little uncomfortable up and down, cause then you be like. Oh, nah, I mean, I know I've been using my body for all kind of things, like, but. What they just said just now was all things were created for the pleasure of the Lord. I thought I just pointed out, so watch this. So we go into the next chapter, voice five, chapter five, it says, and I saw in the right hand of him that sat upon the throne. Upon the throne, a book written within, and on the back side sealed with seven seals. And I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, notice this had to say this, express this. I saw a strong angel, right? A strong angel, right, proclaiming with a loud voice, who is worthy to open the book and to loose the seal thereof. Now, remember, what we're reading, what we're reading, this is after. This is after the church, and I can show you something with period of zero. That's I can tell you. And it says. Says, yeah, and no man in heaven, right? No man in heaven, notice what that say, and no man in heaven. Nor in earth. So those four and twenty elders, what are they? Come on. Those four and twenty elders, what are they?
They, they were men.
They were men, that's why it says, and no man in heaven, nor in earth. Neither under the earth, even dead ones, was able to open the book, neither to look thereof. So although you had four hundred and twenty elders, yet still, they were there for a reason, but not to touch that book.
Yep.
Listen, it don't matter how high we ascend in God, we can't touch that book, we ain't worthy.
Ain't worthy.
Nothing.
The loose seven seals.
Lose no seat on no book, you could, you could sit on the throne, you could wear a crown. You could sit, uh, on the right hand side, but you cannot touch that book. It said, no man was worthy in heaven and nor in earth. Neither under the earth was able to open the book, neither to look, you couldn't even gaze. Even, couldn't even get, is it not even to look thereof? That book, he, he, I, I, listen, I should, I should treat them, those, those, uh, those pornography magazines like that. Not even look thereof, and I was younger whatsoever. All is this. I might have been a, I might have been among them, uh, them, them brothers from, from Sardis, man, whatever. Anyhow, so watch this, and it says, yeah, voice five, and it says, and one of the elders said unto me, weep. No, behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, had prevailed to open the book. And to loose the seven seals thereof, now watch this now, I will show you something. So after the church, something has to happen, if it doesn't happen, ain't nothing happening. The seals have to be loosed. I can show you something. Now, let me read it again, one of the elders said unto me, right? One of the elders said unto me, so one of those elders, one of the four hundred and twenty elders. While John was looking, John was possibly intense. And he was confident by one of those elders would say, don't weep. He tell him a little secret, he say, listen, behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David. Had prevailed to open the book and to loose the seven seals thereof. So watch this now, after the church, the seals have to be loosed. Loosed. Cause you know, I mean, when we listen to prophetic teachings from way back, they try to figure what seal be under right now, ain't under none. Cause we still the church, the church still here. I can show you that, watch this. He says, voice six, and I beheld, and lo, in the midst of the throne and of the four beasts. And in the midst of the elders stood a lamb as it had been slain, having seven horns and seven eyes. Which are the seven spirits of God sent forth into all the earth, so watch this now. So he saw in the midst of the throne, and on the four, it says, and of the four beasts. And in the midst of the elders stood a lamb as it had been slain, he said, that stood the lamb as it had been slain. Having seven horns and seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God. Sent forth into all the earth, so what is this, anyone know what this is? This is the lamp that was burning. So now, this same lamp, which is the seven spirits of God, cause remember that the seven spirits of God. Was the lamp that was burning before the throne, and it says, it was sent forth into all the earth. Now it was sent forth into all the earth, and it says, and he came and took the book. Out of the right hand of him that sat upon the throne. And when he had taken the book, book. The four beasts and four and twenty elders fell down before him, having every one of them harps. Golden vials, full of odors, which are the prayers of the saints, so watch this now. So when the book was taken from out of the hand of him that sat on the throne, watch what started to happen. What started to happen was, it says. It says, yo, um, all of the elders and the, and the four beasts, right? And the four beasts, it says. What I'm gonna back there. And the four beasts. Right, it says, every one of them, right, every one of them harps, their harps. And golden vials full of odors, right? The golden vial full of odors, it says, which are the prayers of the saints. I mean, that's why he says, that you must faint not, he said it to the saints, see, see, cause see, you know, there's a lot of prayers that got tossed up. But those prayers that got tossed up, it wasn't for, it wasn't to be answered when you pray. It's just for you to do your part, you pray. Now those prayers were stored. Right, in golden vials, which are the prayers of the saints. The minute, watch it, the minute. The minute, watch it, the minute this one was, who is worthy to open the book, the minute he grabbed the book. Here's what was presented, the prayers of the saints. When he grabbed the book, what was presented to him now is the prayers of the saints, because see, you want him just start loosening seals for nothing. You know, hey, we, we gotta wreck these things now. What? We got these prayers now. Deal with it. And it says, verse nine, it says, and they sung a new song saying thou art worthy to take the book and to open the seals thereof, for thou, uh, thou was slain and thou hast redeemed us to God by thy blood out of every kindred and tongue and people and nation. So watch this now. The prayers of the saints, the prayers of the saints, it says, yo, verse nine, and it says, and they sung a new song saying thou art worthy to take the book and to open the seals thereof, for thou were slain and has redeemed us. So this is, see, now watch this now, cause you got, you gonna have a lot of dead, these, these, listen, these are a bunch of dead saints. But these saints, prayers now, their prayers have come before him. As he grabbed the book, and as this happens, they kick in. Singing a song saying thou art worthy to take the book and to open the seals thereof, for thou was slain and has redeemed us to God by thy blood out of every kindred. This is not a hopeful saying. This is actual, this is the next step. This is the actual event. Out of every kindred and tongue and people and nation. It's the church. And it says, and had made us unto our God kings and priests. And we shall reign on the earth. Watch this. And I beheld, and I heard the voice of many angels round about the throne and the beasts and the elders. And the number of them was ten thousand times ten thousands and thousands of thousands. He just said, man, ten thousand times ten thousands and, and thousands of thousands. Right? You can better figure on that, right? He saw them angels now. Now watch this now, cause you gotta remember now. Angels now is about to be dispatched. Why? Cause something already happened. Someone, everything, everybody getting ready on your mark, get set, go. I mean, huh?
Yeah.
Read it again, and I beheld, and I heard the voice of many angels round about the throne. Cause remember, it didn't say that they were there before. The book, it wasn't there before the book. After he took the book, cause we know the four beasts was there and the four hundred and twenty elders was there. But it didn't say none but the angels. But after he took the book, now you hear the voice of many angels round about the throne and the beasts and the elders. And the number of them was ten thousand. So you know, ain't talking about the four beasts. The four beasts ain't ten thousand and the four hundred and twenty of, uh, elders ain't ten thousand. You talking about them angels now. It's ten thousand times ten thousand and thousands of thousands now. Now they coming on the scene, cause remember. What happened? He already tell you. At least concern them angels on that. Right? He said, voice, they have a saying, really loud voice, worthy is the lamb that was slain to receive power and riches and wisdom and strength and honor and glory and blessing. And it says, and thirty, it says, and every creature which is in heaven, I will show you something now, to their creatures also in heaven. And it says, and every creature which is in heaven and on the earth. That's why when you read Genesis, chapter two, and every plant before it grew. And anyhow, so it says, yo, and every creature which is in heaven and on the earth and under the earth, and such as are in the sea, and all that are in them heard I sing, blessing and honor, glory and power be unto him that sitteth upon the throne. And unto the lamb forever and ever. And it says, and the four beasts said, amen. And the four and twenty elders fell down and worship him that live forever and ever. So watch what going on now. So far, so good. So we get this thing going on in order. So watch this now, chapter six. And I saw, verse one, and I saw when the lamb opened one of the seals. And I heard, as it wore the noise of thunder. One of the four beasts saying, come and see. So one of the beasts saying, come see. You know, look, come, cause remember now, you recording. So come see. You just can't look on the book. Yeah, but you can see what happened after one of the seal get loose. It says, and I saw, and behold, a white horse, he that sat upon him. Had a bow unto him, and he went forth conquering to, and to conquer. Now, there are many different religious group and everything like that. When they saw like different things was going on in the earth, like wars and everything like that, they was trying to figure out, uh, you know, which one of the horses, this was, uh, what's in under them. We, we can see that, cause everything going on in this particular order. Watch this. And it says here in verse three, and when he had opened the second seal, I heard the second beast say, come and see. And there went out another horse that was red. And power was given to him that sat there on to take peace from the earth. And that they should kill one another. And there was given unto him a great sword. And when he had opened the third seal, I heard the third beast say, come and see. And I beheld and lo, a black horse. And he that sat on him had a pair of balances in his hand. So they figure that, you know, that's the economy. That's what they saying. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't worry about that. Just remember, remember what this thing, uh, i- is all about, right? Now watch this. What it said, it says, and I heard a voice in the midst of the four beasts say, measure of wheat for a penny and three measures of barley for a penny. And see thou hurt not the oil and the wine. And when he had opened the fourth seal, I heard the voice of the fourth beast say, come and see. And I looked, and behold, a pale horse, and his name that sat on him was death. And hell followed him. Now remember, Jesus said, he got the key to hell and death. Right? Now watch this, so now watch this now. He got the key to hell and death. And he says, and power was given unto them over the fourth part of the earth to kill with the sword and with hunger and with death and with the beast of the earth. Verse nine, and when he had opened the fifth seal, I saw under the altar. Watch this. When he opened the fifth seal. He said, I saw under the altar the souls of them that were slain for the word of God. So when this seal was opened, the fifth seal, those that were slain for the word of God, he saw. And it says, for the testimony which they held. And they cried with a loud voice saying, how long, O Lord, holy and true, does thou not judge and avenge our blood on them that dwell on the earth? So the, the, the cry at this time is, when you gonna deal with them on the earth who did this to us? So, okay, now watch this. Verse uh, verse eleven, and it says, and white robes were given unto every one of them. White robes were given unto every one of them, and it was said unto them that they should rest yet for a little season until their fellow servants also, and their brethren that should be killed as they were, should be fulfilled. Cause remember now, I can tell you, the church thing is something that it have to be complete. It has to be fulfilled. And every time, every generation as the, as the church goes by, those that are among, that is in this, in the book of life, are the ones that would be faced with these particular uh, things that would bring them to this particular point. So he say, oh, Lord, your rest a little season until your fellow brethrens. Right? Face the same things that you'll face, that they should be killed, right? And you know, for that to be fulfilled. Verse two, it says, and I beheld, when he had opened the sixth seal and low. There was a great earthquake and the sun became black as sackcloth of hair and the moon became as blood, right? Like they say. If you're been here for years now, oh, that's a blood moon. Every time they say, they see, uh, the moon look little kind of, you know, reddish, what they call, they say there's an eclipse or something like that. People always start rambling about the, the, the blood moon. No, it ain't a blood moon, cause we ain't there yet. Watch this. Watch this. And it says, and, uh, and the heaven departed as it scroll. When it is rolled together, did I skip some? I skipped something, right? Uh, yeah, 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 okay. Verse two again, it says, and I beheld when he had opened the sixth seal, and lo, there was a great earthquake and the sun became black as sackcloth of hair and the moon became as wood. And the stars of heaven fell onto the earth. Now remember, remember what Jesus say. When Jesus start talking about the stars falling, guess who ain't gonna be there? The church ain't gonna be there. Now watch this. Now, all of this is what John was seeing. He wasn't telling it like it's happening, or it happened, or it's, it's happening now or something like that. You showing him here after. So even though you already had dead souls from the church there who was saying, how long? He said, rest a little more, rest a little bit more, right? In a little season. Why? Because everything has to be accomplished at a certain time. Now watch this. And it says, yo, and the stars of heaven fell onto the earth, even as a fig tree uh, casted her untimely figs, when she is shaken off a mighty wind, right? So this is gonna be untimely. Ain't nobody can be able to time this. You know, like, people been trying to time this, but you ain't, you're not listening. Listen, you gotta listen. You can't, you know, you know, time this, you can't time this. It says, yeah, and the seven stars of heaven fell. It says, and the star, sorry, and the stars of heaven fell onto the earth, even as a fig tree casted her untimely figs.
Yeah, that's when you use the untimely. They were untimely daddy. And that's untimely. Yeah.
Yeah, when them stars start coming, it is gonna be unexpected, untimely. Watch this now.
Exactly.
Verse fourteen, it says, and the heaven departed as it scroll, when it was rolled together. And every mountain and island were moved out of their places. Remember, we covered this when we were dealing with them stars, right?
Yeah.
Verse fifteen, it says, and the kings of the earth, watch this, and the kings of the earth. And the great men, and the rich men, and the chief captains, and the mighty men. And every born man and every free man hid themselves in the dens and in the rocks of the mountain. Cause only damn you now. But I can show you something. I can show you something, because remember now, there are, there are persons who will be, um, faced with this, who will have the opportunity to be delivered even before this actually hits. Watch this. And said, uh, and said to the mountains and rocks, fall on us and hide us from the face of him that sitteth on the throne and from the wrath of the lamb. Wrath of the lamb, you know. Uh, the wrath of the lamb. So, you, you know, cause you, you only been hearing about the sack of lamb, the lamb that was slain. Now this, this one, you know, it, it's almost, it's almost like a horror movie, uh, like a horror movie. Slain lamb. Slain lamb turns wrathful, becomes wrathful, becomes enraged. It says, for, for great, for the great day of his wrath is come. And who shall be able to stand, right? Okay. And after these things, I saw, now watch this, this is how this would sums it up now. And after these things, I saw four angels. So after this, after the seals, cause remember now, when, when he loosen seals, he don't, he don't, you know, he don't, he don't, he don't tie him back. He don't lose them and then tie them back. They loose.
Yeah, they loose, that's it.
Now watch this. And after these things, I saw four angels standing on the four corners of the earth. Holding the four winds of the earth. That the wind should not blow on the earth, nor on the sea, nor on any tree. For, it says, and I saw another angel ascending from the east, having the seal of the living God. He, I, the loud voice to the four angels, to whom it was given to hurt the earth and the sea, saying, hurt not the earth, neither the sea, nor the trees till we have sealed, right? The servants of our God in their forehead. Now these ones, cause remember now, the ones who were under the altar, who said aloud, they is ready. I mean, it's like, listen, you need to let, let this thing rip. He said, oh, London. You were, there are other fellow servants who could have the face, the same fate as you. They'll be put to death for the word of God's sake. Ain't talking about people who get shoot, get to the bank. And things like that. Someone kill you because you got my big chin and things like that. Ain't talking about that. He talking about, he talking about something different now. We kill for the word's sake, right? So during this time, when the, when the seals are loose, you got them four angels who are in control now of these four winds, and one angel came saying, hurt not the earth, neither the sea, nor the trees, till we have sealed the servants of our God in their forehead. That's the reason why they set up to get sealed in their foreheads. Cause remember, the other ones. Hold on now. Let me, let me get the one for you.
That's like, that's like the, like, the tears and the thing of many things, it's like, yeah, really use couple, um. And Christ. Yeah, yeah. All I come back, all I comes tonight.
Okay, so, uh, so watch this. So in Ephesians, in Ephesians one, in Ephesians chapter one, right? Watch this. Ephesians chapter one. It says, yo. It says, yo, in verse eleven, it says, in whom also we have obtained an inheritance being, uh, predestinated according to the purpose of him who will get all things after the cause of his own will. That we should be to the prayers of his glory, who first trusted in Christ, right? The, the ones who were before, who first trusted in Christ. Cause you know, like he said, first, last, last, first. The, the ones who were before, who first trusted in Christ, but you know, like he said, first, last, last, first. So he says here, in whom he also trusted. After that, he heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation. In whom also after that, he believed, watch this. He was sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise, so those who he said. Ones who were, who went before. They was, they had time to receive the Holy Spirit and everything like that. That's the church, they had time to receive the Holy Spirit and everything, that's the seal. That's the seal that the church has, the Holy Spirit wherein you are sealed. You are sealed by the Holy Spirit, but these ones weren't, these ones have to be sealed by angels. But they gotta be sealed in their foreheads. It, it reminds of the Passover. The blood.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right? Because without that, they would have no seal.
No seal in your.
And you're going because when they, see because what coming, what coming is the angel of death, the angel of death in here. Once there's no seal, it can be, eh, yeah.
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 All the, no seal.
You got that right, alright, so. This particular angel now came to those four angels now, because remember now, the seven seals are loose. Seven seals are loose, now they see now. We in the time right now that we can and are being sealed by the Holy Spirit. We can't play around, we can't be grieving the Holy Spirit, things like that, can't play with that.
Yeah.
Because guess what, you don't wanna, you won't be, listen, you won't among them, who the angels have to now decide, who they can put the seal on. Uh, that's a different story, you better get your seal now. Trying, trying to show you, right? That's why them souls that were under the altar, that's them sat right there, they didn't see it, they didn't had the Holy Spirit. They're gone. But this set here, who's, when all this chaos is about to erupt. And everything like that, four angels holding back the four winds, one came and it says here. Voice four, and I heard the number of them which were sealed. Right? And there were sealed a hundred and forty-four thousand. Out of all the tribes of the children of Israel. Right? Now watch this, watch this, you man, I can show you something. Here's what they ain't tell us, you know, like brothers, you know, like they say, you know, we can break this down and break down, watch what they forget. Watch what they, they slip, they didn't see this. The children of Israel were the first, who was the last to get sealed. You see this? The children of Israel had to get sealed. By the angel yelling to the four angels, say, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, it says, we got a seal, twelve thousand of the tribe of Reuben. Twelve thousand of the tribe of God. Of the tribe of Asher, of the tribe of Neftalium, of the tribe of Manasseh. Of the tribe of Simeon, of tribe of Levi, of the tribe of Isaka. And of the tribe of Zebulun. Of the tribe of Joseph, of the tribe of Benjamin. The first, that's what Jesus was talking about, so Jesus, and the first, you say, the first should be last and the last should be first. We just trying to put that on all kind of other things and everything like that, we thought he is talking about. Um, but there's some people who became Christians long time, some of them think it be the last to get it, no, that what he talking about. You, you was given the opportunity to be sealed by the Holy Spirit, these ones weren't. These ones had to be sealed by the angels in their forehead. Now I'm telling you, although there was a great story painting about this. Now I realize I wouldn't wanna be among this set right here. I can show you that, because why? This had to, had to happen, we have the Lord took twelve thousand out of all the tribes. Of the children of Israel. Now watch this. Right, watch this. Voice nine, and I, it says, after this I beheld, and low, a great multitude. After this, and low. A great multitude which no man can number of all nations and kindred, kindreds. And people and tongues stood before the throne and before the lamb, clothed with white robes. Palms in their hands, right? So watch this now. Tribes of Israel came in by twelve thousand out of every tribe. And after this, he saw great multitude which no man can number of all nations. Voice shall be last, last shall be first. Right? Kindreds and peoples and tongues stood before the throne, before the lamb, clothed with white robes. Palms in their hands and cried with loud voice saying salvation to our God, which seated upon the throne. And unto the lamb, and all the angels stood round about the throne. And, and about the elders and the four. And the four beasts and fell before the throne on their faces and worship God, saying amen. Blessing and glory and wisdom and thanksgiving and honor and power and might be unto our God forever and ever, amen. And one of the, one of the elders answered, saying unto me, what are these? Which are arrayed in white robes? And whence they came, whence came they, where did they come from? He said, voice fourteen, I say unto himself, now you know. He said, you know, now notice, and he said, and, and he said to me, these are they which came out of. Of great. Tribulation. Remember what he was saying to the churches, the seven churches, right? He was saying, there was one particular church that he said, that's it. He threatened them with great tribulation. He said, I, I, I would, I would spare you from the hurt of great tribulation. But some, you know, I mean, but some, some if they can just have to come to great tribulation, so he says, that's who they set up. He said, he said, they came through, uh, uh, great, great tribulation. And have washed their robes and made them white in the blood of the lamb, therefore are they before the throne of God. And serve him day and night in his temple. He that seated upon the throne shall dwell among them, and they shall hunger no more. Neither shall, it says, neither thirst anymore. Neither shall the sun light on them, nor any heat, and the lamb, it sound like air conditioning. Sound like, observe that, a little better than air conditioning.
Yeah.
Sound like nothing better than that.
I say, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a cooling.
Well, listen. It says here, seventeen, it says, for the lamb, which is in the midst of the throne, shall feed them. And shall lead them unto living fountains of waters. And God shall wipe away all tears from their eyes. Now, that's how it going down. That's exactly how it going down, now guess what, maybe this is, this is without all the other spooky stuff. But all them other spooky stuff, what comes after that is what gonna be now. What, what is gonna be, uh, um, chaos on the rest? I mean, it's just gonna be chaos on the rest, you understand? Chaos. And you, you don't, you don't wanna be there, you know, you don't wanna be there, so. So, we are among the, the church. We are a part of the church, we have to fulfill our part and do our part and think none. Okay, because you see what gonna happen, I mean, cropping out on the sand ain't gonna get you, uh, nowhere. I'm desirable, um, it, it ain't gonna happen, okay? Now watch this, this is the last chapter. It says here, chapter eight, verse one, it says, and when he had opened the seventh seal. There was silence in heaven above the space of half an hour. And I saw the seven angels which stood before God and to them were given seven. Trumpets, and another angel came and stood at the altar, having a golden censer. There was given unto him much incense, that he should offer it with the prayers. Of all saints upon the golden altar which was before the throne. And the smoke of the incense which came with the prayers of the saints ascended up before God out of the angel's hand. And the angel took the censer and filled it with fire of the altar. And cast it into the earth. And there were voices and thundering and lightnings and earthquakes and seven angels, and the seven angels which had the seven trumpets. Prepared themselves to sound, the first angel sounded, and there followed hail, see that? Lord know what he doing, uh, you know, now watch this now, so watch this, when these. So right before all of this, the Lord then pull out everyone who he needed to pull out. Pull out. Right, you follow, and then after he says, once again, seven, verse seven, it says, and the first angel sounded, and there followed hail. And fire mingled with blood, and they were ca, and they were cast upon the earth, and the third part of the trees. Was burned up and all the green grasses burned up, now remember, going back, remember. The angels, four angels holding the four winds, one angel cried and said, hurt not the trees. Or anything till we have sealed the servants of the, going there for it, and that they were the ones who was first, who got sealed last. The children of Israel. Don't thought that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, man.
Because they, 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 they were the ones who he had chosen, the chosen of the Lord. Apple of his eyes or whatsoever, but it had to get to the point to where, um, uh, uh. Eh, eh, the, the destruction had to get whole back, so twelve thousand of the heavy tribe. Uh, could come in the ark.
Yeah.
I just saying.
Yeah, that's like, that's a, that's a good, that's a good illustration there, the ark, I'm gonna listen here.
Yeah, and they were the first.
Make it in.
They were the first, weren't they the first? They were the first. Who he chose first?
Yeah, them same, them same children.
The children of Israel, that's who he chose first. Yeah? Now watch this now, so now you see now the chaos coming. So don't mind people tripping theirself when they see, when they talk about. Uh, you know, the Lord showed me that a tsunami coming, listen. Them things are possible or whatsoever, but that don't means that they ain't talking about them seals. They don't have them seals, because guess what, ain't nothing happening until the seven seal get loose, you all see that, right?
Yeah.
All the seals would then get loose, one to six, one to six, then get loose. Now, four angels holding back the four winds, right? The four angels holding back the four winds. The four angels holding back the four winds, right? Ready to let it rip, one come saying, hold on, hold on. Ain't nothing start, ain't nothing start dropping yet, nothing. Uh, nothing start dropping yet. Now when they did start dropping is after the seven seal. Once the seven seal get loose, eh, ain't no angel saying nothing, no, eh, 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 it's let it rip. So watch this, watch this now, Israel, Israel. It's like you, Israel escaped by the skin of their teeth, twelve thousand out of every tribe. Anyhow, and it says here, and the second angel sounded and. And as it were, a great mountain burning with fire was cast into the sea. And the third part of the sea became blood. Anyhow, so let me backtrack just a minute, let me go back, because I, I see where I gotta go back and, and, and bring it out again. Right? So this one. Uh, in, in chapter seven, chapter seven, verse two, it says, and I saw another angel ascending from the east. Having the seal of the living God. And he cried with a loud voice to the four angels. To whom it was given to hurt the earth and the sea. It's saying, in verse three, hurt not the earth, neither the sea, nor the trees. Till we have sealed. The servant of our God in their forehead, so God's servants got sealed right before. Right before the destruction came, now watch this, once again, back to chapter eight, read it again. And it says, uh, and, uh, where it was again, and, um. Okay, the second, the third part, okay, uh? Okay, yeah, voice eight, right, and the second angel sounded, as it were, a great mountain burning with fire. Was cast into the sea and the third part of the sea became blood, see that? So watch it, so just like how that angel. I just trying to show you, everything flowing in order. In order, right now, ain't talking to no church, because you, you don't church, y'all. Unless you, unless you the, the church, the synagogue of Satan. Uh, unless you the synagogue of Satan, if you the synagogue of Satan, yeah, you still here. But you ain't the church, the church where it says, and the gates of hell shall not prevail. The gates of hell shall not prevail against the church, because remember, Jesus said, I got the keys of hell. So if he got the keys of hell, he mean, what he say, that the gates of hell will not reveal. Right? Because remember now, one of them, they, they bringing hell and hell and death, hell and death coming like prison. Coming to collect, come, come son, come, come daughter. Hmm? Yeah, that's what he saying, when he said the gates of, it's a prison, because remember what it, what it, what it was, it's a prison. Hell is a prison, you get in a jail, called hell. Alright, so watch this, and destruction gonna be coming down and so forth. Church ain't there, church is long gone, so I just trying to show you, let me read this, this already set up for us. This already set up for us, so don't mind, like how people trying to, you know, trying to like. March this with that, march it, that's it, John was writing it as it was shown. In the order in which it was gonna get flowing in. So, at this, at this particular point, Babylon ain't fall yet. Because guess what, as you can see, let me go right up, it says, verse seven, it says, the first angel sounded, and there. Um, followed hail and fire mingled with blood, and they were cast upon the earth. And the third part of the trees were burnt up and all the green grass was burnt up. You see that? So that's what happened, that's what happened when, uh, the first, um. Angel sounded, that's what start to happen, trees and grass start getting burning up. Okay, Babylon ain't fall yet, second angel sounded, right? As it were, a great mountain with fire was cast into the sea. And the third part of the sea became blood, see that? Babylon ain't fall yet, plus what? See that? Babylon ain't fall yet. Plus what? You see what happened? The, as the trumpet sounds, notice what is starting to happen? The, the, the attacks is, is coming at the earth. It's coming at the earth, but it's specifically hitting certain places for a particular reason. Uh, cause guess it, it can be nowhere to run, nowhere to hide, okay? Nine, and the third part, it says, and the third part of the creatures, which was in the sea and had life died, and the third part of the ships were destroyed. Babylon ain't fall yet. And the third of angels sounded, and there fell a great star from heaven burning as it were a lamp, and it fell upon the third part of the rivers and upon the fountains of waters. Notice what it going at? This thing has had no military.
All the resources, all of the resources.
All, everything like that, all the natural resources is weakening now the earth. In the earth, huh? Or whatever. But guess what? What you could do when the earth becomes, uh, weakened and everything like that, ready to crumble and fall apart? Verse eleven, and it says, and the name of the star was called Wormwood. Wormwood ain't come yet. And it says, and the third part of the waters became wormwood, and many men died of the waters because they were made bitter. And the fourth angel sounded, and the third part of the sun was smitten. And the third part of the moon, you see that? This what happening? Third part of the moon, right, and a part of the sun was smitten. Hmm? So watch this, and the third part of the stars, and, and as the third part of them was darkened. Right? And the day shone not, when they got a. Alright, so, and it says here, and the fourth angel sounded, and the third part of the sun was smitten. And the third part of the moon, and the third part of the stars, and as the third part of them was darkened. And the day shone not, and the day shone not. So not, see, see that, Jack? And the day shone not, so you couldn't even tell. So there was no more day.
Right.
You see that? The Lord taking away, he, listen, he, listen. He taking away some seriousness, he taking away some things that no one could take away.
That's right, cause you know the day, and it's just like how they do in war. When a country attack, when one nation attacks another nation, they would hit the, the other nation reserve.
Yeah.
To cause them problems.
Yeah, see, all these things were getting hit, the whole, the, the planet need these things.
Yep.
Planet need these things, okay? And it says, and the day shone not for a third part of it, and, uh, and the night likewise. So it was confusion. You can tell many, you can tell, you can, I, you know for sure it was in day. But you want to ensure what part of whatever part was the night.
That's right.
And I beheld and heard an angel flying through the midst of heaven saying with a loud voice, whoa, 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 to the inhabitants of the earth by reason of the other voice of the trumpet. Now, it's going now to the inhabitants of the earth. You see that? Everything going in order.
Yeah.
Right? And of the three angels, which are, which are yet to sound. So the, of the three angels, which are yet to sound, he said now, whoa, they're inhabitants now. You see that?
Yeah. Nah, they time gone.
Church is long gone. Church is long gone. Lord, listen, show me, listen, no, don't read revel, don't read Revelation, like how we've been taught to read Revelation. Read it, just like how he laid out. That's how it unfolded. Here's the reason, watch this. The reason why we can't figure out things like, what is the mark of the beast, although we tried, we can't figure out the number of his name and so forth, although we tried, is because we ain't there yet. We, we ain't gonna be here for that.
See?
Okay?
That ain't applying to be here.
Exactly, right, because this, this now, these wars, these last three wars. But watch this now. These last week, that's how to show you, World War One ain't none of them wars. Like they say, and World War Two, ain't none of them wars, and we waiting on one more war. No, that ain't none of them wars, cause ain't none of them, if you see, if one, if two of them wars then gone, that means, that means a third part of the sea already destroyed and everything living in it, the, the sun ain't giving no more light, and the third part of the moon, and you don't see no more day.
That's right.
No more trees, no more grass.
Yeah, cause that burn up too.
That burn up too, so ain't none of the wars happen yet. He let you know, now, yeah, other wars. Watch this. Watch this now. Chapter nine, verse one. And the fifth angel, or I, I did say chapter eight was the last one, anyhow.
Let's go, let's go, man. That's right, that's right.
And the fifth angel sounded, and I saw a star fall from heaven unto the earth. And to him was given the key of the bottomless pit. And he opened the bottomless pit, and there arose a smoke o- of the pit. And the smoke of great furnace, and the sun and the air were darkened by reason of the smoke of the pit. Cause remember, a third part of the sun was smitten. Right? A third part, okay, one third. Right? So that means, right, that means you still get other part. So if you get, um, um, one third of the, hey, you got a, you got a great portion, but you still got other portion. But then now, the sun and the air were darkened, so the rest of whatever was left was darkened by reason of the smoke of the pit. And it says, voice three, and there came out of the smoke locusts upon the earth. Now it sound like Egypt, right? Upon the earth and unto them. Came onto the earth and unto them was give the earth a power. And it was commanded them that they should not hurt the grass. Listen, so plus remember, a third part of the grass was get hit and the tree. But these things was commanded, don't touch no, I'm getting there, mess of no grass, right? Hurt. It says, not hurt the grass of the earth, neither any green thing, neither any tree, but only those men which have not the seal of God in their foreheads. Remember now, the ones who get the seal, they're like, who have the seal in their foreheads, they were the twelve tribes, the, the twelve thousand of every tribe. They done gone. But what can happen to the rest of them Israelites and the other people? Oh.
The seal in their head.
He say, anyone you find who don't have the seal, go at will. Uh? He says here, but only those men which have not the seal of God in their foreheads. And it says, unto them it was given that they should not kill them. Don't give them though. He says, but that they should be tormented five months. Meeting their mosquitoes what outside. Boy, them mosquitoes say, you don't know that. Them little things, them little things what outside, it, it, it causes the, um, shut down the party, my party. Come back inside. My wife will say, you all come inside. It's where them locusts are now, but running around like scorpions. But some of them mosquitoes, I ain't gonna lie, sometimes it's really, but Jesus, he, he, he shot, he shot us, the mosquito. Man, uh, so watch this now, this the torment, the torment, the torment. Torment, right? Torment. Right off a scorpion, and it says, uh, when he striking a man, and it says here, verse six. And in those days shall men seek death, in those days. You know, but now, you know, when people committing suicide, cause baby will cut the light off when they get, they off from their job. Anyone trying to commit suicide, cause they get paid from the job or dang, you know, promotion, in these, there's what he talking about, they gonna want to kill theyself because of the torment. He says here, you see, and in those days shall men seek death and shall not find it and shall desire to die, and death shall run from them. With you, cause remember, Jesus said, I got the key.
Do what some trying to kill, they say have a guy die.
He said, I got the key. Jesus got the key of hell and death. You can't, that's it, cause remember, he said, I got the key. Right? To open it, and no man can shut, and shut, and no man can open. So when he close that door, you run into death, and death ain't on your run. Cause what happen, and it says, and death shall flee from them, that's why, death obey, obey Christ. Buddy, I want no problem with Christ, so I gotta go this way. I hear what you're saying, I know you're going through some serious torture, but I gotta go this way. Uh? Death running from you because death ain't have no authorization to take you on. No room in the inn. How about that? Ooh, how about that? Now watch this now. And it says in seven, it says, and the shapes of the locusts were like unto horses, prepared unto battle. And on their heads were as it were crowns like gold, and their faces were as the faces of men. And they had hair as the hair of women, and their teeth were as the teeth of lions. And they had breastplate, that is with breastplate of iron, and the sound of their wings as the sound of chariots of many horses run and into battle, and they had tails like unto scorpions, and there were, and, and there were stings in their tails. And their power was to hurt men five months.
What? Torture. Five months of torture.
Verse eleven. And they had a king over them, which is the angel of the bottomless pit, so the angel of the bottomless pit is what guide them. I tell you, these things were for God. They are the angel of the bottomless pit, working for God. See that? Now watch this now. Watch this, cause they say this Satan, anyhow, and it says here. And had a king over them, which is the angel of the bottom, bottomless pit, whose name in the Hebrew tongue is Abba Don. But in the Greek, the tongue, in the Greek tongue, had his name Apollyon. And this is, watch this, verse twelve, one war was passed. So after the five months of torture, after five months of torture, he say, oh, that's one war. One war, one war just passed.
One.
Right, and then says, and the old, there came two wars more, ever after. And the sixth angel sounded, and I heard a voice from the four horns of the golden altar, which is before God, saying to the sixth angel, which had the trumpet, loose the four angels, which are bound in the great river Euphrates. You ain't seen, you, nobody seen none of these things yet? He say, he said, this sixth angel, he said, listen, loose the four angels, which are bound in the great river, so there are four angels, right, who are bound in the great river Euphrates. He said, loose them brackets. Watch this, verse fifteen. And the four angels were loose, which were prepared for an hour. And a day, and a month, and a year, for to slay the third part of men. Oh, Jesus, Lord of mercy. And it says, and the number of the army of the horsemen were two hundred thousand. Thousand, and I heard the number of them. And thus I saw the horses in the vision, and them that sat on them, having breastplate of fire and of justin and brimstone. And the heads of the horses were as the heads of lion, out of their mouth issued fire and smoke and brimstone. By these three was the third part of men and killed by fire, you know what? And by the smoke, and by the brimstone, you know, like, you know, anyhow, you see like, and they showing them water, they got it something. They fighting them, they, you know, gas, burning up people and everything like that. These, these four angels got a whole army. The whole army, which is, uh, which is two hundred thousand thousand. Millions of them. And they, they spewing fire, 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 right? Oh, issuing out of their mouth, and it says, for their power is in their mouth and in their tails, for their tails were like unto serpents and had heads with, and with them, they do hurt. It hurt. And it says, and the rest of the men, which were not killed by these plagues yet, repented not of the works of their hands, and there's that they should not chip devils and idols and gold and silver and brass and stone and of wood, which neither can see nor hear nor walk, neither repented they of their murders nor their sorceries, nor of their fornication, nor of their death. So guess what? Life still going on, they still carrying on smartly, uh? Babylon still is in existence, okay? Verse one of the last chapter there. And I saw another mighty angel came down from heaven clothed with, with a cloud. And a rainbow was upon his head, and his face was as it were the sun. And his feet as pillows of fire, and he had in his hand a little book open. And he set his right foot upon the sea and his left foot on the earth. And he cried with a loud voice, and when a lion roared, as when a lion roared, and when he had cried, seven thunders uttered their voices, and when the seven thunders had uttered their voices, I was about to write. And I heard a voice from heaven saying unto me, fill up those things, which the seven thunders uttered. And write them down. So watch this, there's some things, what we don't know about.